The House will come to order. Members, please take their seats.
The House is now in session. All persons not entitled or privileged on the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by the Reverend Elizabeth Felicetti, Rector, St. David's Episcopal Church, North Chesterfield, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, which will be led by the delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Let us pray. Gracious God, Fountain of Wisdom, we ask you this afternoon to guide and bless the representatives of the Commonwealth of Virginia here assembled, that they may enact legislation that pleases you and benefits the people of our state. Grant them discerning hearts, respectful discourse, and guide them on the paths that lead to the highest good. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic The clerk will close the roll.
Madam Speaker, a quorum is present.
Pursuant to House Rule 3, I have examined and approved the Journal for the House of Delegates for Wednesday, January 22, 2020. Motions and resolutions under Rule 39 pursuant to provisions of Rule 40 are now in order. The clerk shall announce the first morning hour order of business, including any clerk's announcements and communications.
First morning hour order of business pursuant to House Rule 40, the Speaker requests members to use their Request to Speak buttons to be recognized. I have no announcements.
Delegate from Chesterfield, Delegate Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise just to introduce for an introduction.
Delegate Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to point out that we had a wonderful, very short prayer this morning. And it was given by Reverend Elizabeth Felicetti. I went to the House to give her and her husband Gary a warm House welcome.
Thank you so much, Reverend Felicetti, for being here, and hope you enjoy the rest of your day here in Capitol Square. Thanks for sharing with us. Delegate Tyler. Delegate Sussex County Delegate Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise first for an introduction, a request, and a motion.
Delegate Tyler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today in the gallery are teachers of the year from different regions of Virginia. I ask them to please stand. In Region 1, we have Gregory Lindaker, Henrico County High School. Region 2, we have Rachel Thompson from Princess Anne High School. Region 3, we have Latasha Lee from North Thummelen Middle and High School. Region 5, we have Amy Mallow from Huddleston Elementary School. Region 7, Sarah Deal from Marion Senior High School. And Region 8, Michelle Howell of La Crosse Elementary School. Our teachers do an exceptional job preparing our students for academic and vocational success each day. I remember when I was an elementary school student, my teacher was the one that I looked up to, to help, for help and encouragement, and I wanted to be just like them. Evidently, these teachers here today also serve as role model and elite educators among their students, peers, and the community. Congratulations on being selected as the Teacher of the Year of your region, and thank you for your exemplary service and dedication, with the members joining me in welcoming
It's an honor and privilege for all of us to have you with us. Thank you for what you do every single day and for serving as such great role models for the youth, and it's an honor for us to honor you today. Thank you. Delegate Tyler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to request that the clerk call up out of order HR 25 and 35.
House Resolution Number 25 commending Andrea Carson Johnson. House Resolution Number 35 commending Rodney A. Robinson.
Madam Speaker, I move the adoption of the resolutions.
Delegate Tyler moves the adoption of HR 25 and 35. All those in favor of the adoptions of those resolutions say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the resolutions are adopted. Delegate Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I request permission to take the center aisle, and Madam Speaker, I would request permission to take the center aisle along with the delegates who are teachers or retired teachers, delegates representing the city of Salem, Roanoke, King William County, and the city of Richmond
Delegate Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It is honored this morning as chairperson of the Education Committee to present Andrea Carson Johnson, the 2020 Virginia Teacher of the Year, and our 2019 National Teacher of the Year, Rodney Robinson. Now, let me tell you a little bit about these fine folks. Ms. Johnson is an English teacher at Salem High School. She was selected from a group of eight regional finalists by a committee of representatives, educational association, and the business community. She is a graduate of the University of Virginia and Virginia Commonwealth University. Ms. Johnson did not begin her career in a traditional classroom. Instead, she worked as an educator at the Airfield Conference Center and Southeast East Forest Center in Wakefield, Virginia, in Sussex County. Ms. Johnson is a beneficiary of the Educate Virginia Careers Switcher licensure program administered by the Virginia College System. She began her teaching career in 2011 at Lakeland High School and then moved to Roanoke, Virginia, and now she teaches 12th grade English and college prep at Salem High School. She is known for her joy and energy in the classroom and teaches every day to inspire her students to love learning and compel them to succeed both in the classroom and the world. Now, our 2019 National Teacher of the Year is Mr. Rodney Robinson. Mr. Robinson teaches history at Verge Binghamford Education Center located inside the Richmond Juvenile Center within the Richmond Public School System. He is a first-generation college student and graduated in 2000 from Virginia State University. He grew up in King Williams County with his mother, and as a child, he watched the children in the daycare. He observed how his mother treated all her children the same, with love and kindness. His mother taught him that every child deserves the proper amount of love to get where he or she needed. This was Rodney's first lesson in equity. While attending a predominantly high school, he faced the challenge of identity, but he did not let that stop him. After graduating from Virginia State University, he taught the 7th grade history in Richmond Public School System, and then at the age of 21 years old, he began teaching at Verge Binghamford Education Center in the Richmond Public School System, now for 19 years. He wanted to go to teach at Binghamford because he wanted a better understanding of the school-to-prison pipeline. He believes in helping his own. Rodney states, while other schools, jobs, and school systems may seem easier, he firmly believes in supporting his own. One of his platforms now is economic equity and making sure all kids, no matter where they go or where they live, have the resources they needed to be successful. The National Teacher of the Year Award is the most prestigious national honor program that focuses on public attention on excellence in teacher. And I'm so happy today to say the 2019 National Teachers Award recipient is from the Commonwealth of Virginia. At this time, I would like to present these individuals with the resolution that we just passed. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you so much, Delegate Tyler, and wow, what an honor for all of us here to have the 2020 Virginia Teacher of the Year, Andrea Johnson, and the 2019 National Teacher of the Year, Rodney Robinson. You all are so inspiring, and there is not a member here that doesn't recognize and value what you do every single day, how you're shaping the future, how you're shaping the youth. So we honor you today. Thank you for being here with us. Thank you for what you do every single day, and it was wonderful just to see all of our educators in the back as well, standing with you. Thank you. Enjoy your day in Capitol Square. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Plum.
Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Plum, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Fairfax County delegation, it gives me a great pleasure to tell you that in the gallery, we have representatives from Leadership Fairfax Program. If I'd ask if they could stand. Madam Speaker, you're familiar with this program, and I want to tell you that as I introduced them, how proud they are of the fact that you were a graduate of the Leadership Fairfax Program a few years ago. That program's actually been in place for 30 years. It's a wonderful way in which people in the community get to know about our local communities, programs, and services, and develop then leadership skills and opportunities through opportunities of visiting programs and services in the community. It's a wonderful program, and I know that you want to join me in welcoming representatives of Leadership Fairfax if you'd stand.
Thank you, Delegate Plum, and I am a proud graduate of the best class of Leadership Fairfax. It's great to see you all today, and thank you for what you do for all of us and your leadership. Enjoy the rest of your day here in Capitol Square. Thanks. Delegate from Petersburg, Delegate Ayer.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Ayer, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, visiting here with us today around the Capitol is the Southside Virginia Association of Realtors. The Southside Virginia Association of Realtors is a professional organization dedicated to advocating on behalf of the interests of private property owners. The association is here for their Day on the Hill, and at this time, I ask you all join me in giving the Realtors a warm House welcome.
Great to see the Southside Association of Realtors, and enjoy your day here in Capitol Delegate from Goochlin, Delegate McGuire.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate McGuire, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We want to recognize some hard-working young people from Y Street, the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth, award-winning youth-led volunteer group. They're here today in the balcony and around the Capitol to promote Virginia Healthy Youth Day, which they're celebrating today. As a member of the Board of Trustees for the Virginia Foundation of Healthy Youth, I am proud to welcome these young high school students who volunteer their time across Virginia, working on projects to improve the health of all Virginians. The Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth empowers Virginia's youth to make healthy choices by reducing and preventing youth tobacco use, substance use, and childhood obesity. Thanks to them and others' efforts around the Commonwealth, we are now seeing the lowest numbers yet for youth tobacco use in Virginia. The number of high school smokers in Virginia is now down 75% from where it was 20 years ago, and that's due in large part to the efforts of these fine young people like the Y Street volunteers. I hope everyone here will join me in giving them a warm House welcome.
Great to see you and have you all here today. Hope you enjoy the experience, and especially on Healthy Youth Day. So good luck. Delegate from Suffolk, Delegate Brewer.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At the Capitol today, we actually have the Training Alumni Association of the Virginia Board of People with Disabilities in partnership with the Arc of Virginia, including some of my very own constituents here for advocacy. The association is a program of the board that has decided to facilitate grassroots advocacy, as made up of partners in policymaking and their youth leadership academy. Currently, they have four regional advocacy chapters in Virginia, including my very own home of Tidewater. I hope that our House members would give them a very warm welcome to the Capitol today.
Great to see you all and other members of the Arc, and enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Thanks for being here. Delegate from Fairfax County, Delegate Tran.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of a floor introduction.
Delegate Tran, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Speakers and members of the House, in the gallery today, we have members of the Virginia Clinicians for Climate Action. I ask them to rise to be recognized. The Virginia Clinicians for Climate Action, also known as VCCA, is a group of over 300 Virginia healthcare professionals who are committed to addressing the negative health impacts of climate change on Virginians. Their activities include education in the form of conferences, advocacy, such as today's visit to the legislature, and community outreach. I'm honored to have some of my own constituents who are here with me today, one who serves as vice chair of advocacy for VCCA, and also some who serve as physicians in practice in the 42nd District. Climate change is real, and it poses a threat to our public health, and I thank them for their work and ask that we give them a warm House welcome.
It's great to see the Clinicians for Climate Action, and thank you for what you're doing and taking time out of your busy schedules to be with us here in Capitol Square. Thank you. Delegate from Fairfax County, Delegate Corey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Corey, you have the floor.
Thank you. First editorial comment, I think we're having a record number of advocacy groups visiting us so far this session, and it's a real pleasure to meet them. And today, we have the Supporters and Volunteers with the Humane Society of the United States. The Humane Society of the United States has been recognized as one of the most effective animal protection organizations in the U.S. They've been recognized for the work that they and their volunteers do to provide direct care, rescue, and services for animals in crisis. Their advocacy work to pass laws to protect animals from cruelty and suffering, and the support and guidance they provide to local and state law enforcement. And I should also add that it was at the urging of the Humane Society of the United States that I founded the Animal Welfare Caucus. Please, would you all stand so that we can give you a warm welcome?
Thank you, Delegate Corey. It's great to see the folks from the Humane Society of the United States, and I know many of us have been spending time with us throughout the morning already, and we look forward to future visits and time with you later on today. Thank you. Delegate from Bedford, Delegate Byron.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Byron, you have the floor.
Thank you. On behalf of Delegate Austin, Delegate Walker, and myself, we have a large group from the Bedford Area Chamber of Commerce and the Leadership Bedford, and I would like to thank Madam Speaker that we have the best leadership group in Bedford with us today, and I would ask if they would rise and be recognized and that the House would give them a warm welcome.
It's great to see the Bedford Chamber and Leadership Bedford here today. I hope you enjoy your day in Capitol Square. Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Jones, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the House, today in the gallery, we are joined by over 20 members of the Old Dominion Student Government Association, and if they're with us, I'd ask that they please stand. With over 25,000 students, 88% of whom are residents of the Commonwealth, ODU graduates the second-highest number of STEM-age students, and is one of the most diverse universities we have in this Commonwealth. The SGA at ODU this year has focused on amplifying the voices of ODU's diverse student body of undergraduate, graduate, military, and commuter students, as well as our international students. The student leaders in the SGA serve as liaisons between the student body, administration, and the community of Norfolk while working to enhance their experience on campus. The group is passionate about higher ed, and two of the students in the organization are currently serving as interns with us here in the General Assembly this year, and I'd ask the members of the House to give them a warm House welcome.
It's great to see the students from Old Dominion and Student Government, and thanks for your advocacy, and I hope those of you that are interning down here have a great experience. Thanks. Delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Rasool, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, today I'd like to ask representatives of the Virginia Assisted Living Association to please rise. Representatives from the Virginia Assisted Living Association are here with us on the Capitol today, providing advocacy for all kinds of seniors who desperately need our help. This is a nonprofit membership organization dedicated to advocacy, communicating, and educating on the needs of Virginia's assisted living industry. They want people to know that seniors vote too, and the Virginia Assisted Living Association encourages state leaders to invest in choices by supporting assisted living here in Virginia. If you'd please join me in welcoming the association today.
We welcome you, the Virginia assisted living folks here today, and thank you for your advocacy on behalf of seniors on so many important issues. Delegate Runyon.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of introduction.
Delegate Runyon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, today we are joined in the gallery by Dr. John Downey, and if his group will rise, President of Blue Ridge Community College, Dean Marlena Jarboe, and several remarkable students that I had an opportunity to meet earlier in my office. Just fantastic people, fantastic stories. Thank you all. Blue Ridge Community College does great work in the Shenandoah Valley, meeting specific needs of employers and meeting our futures and providing our citizens seeking a meaningful career and ample opportunities to succeed. Please join me in offering a warm House welcome to these folks.
Great to see the Blue Ridge Community College folks here. I hope you enjoy your day in Capitol Square. Thank you. Delegate Koiner.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Koiner, you have the floor.
Thank you. Today, we have with us Amy Bartalatti. She is the coordinator of the Office of Family and Community Engagement for Chesterfield County Public Schools. Their office believes that all families have the capacity and desire to actualize the very best outcomes for their children. They believe families and schools should be partners, and while many across the Commonwealth thought our teachers and families might have been enjoying a long, extended weekend from school over this last weekend, they proved that if you provide engaging programs, folks will turn out. They had several hundred folks attend a Raising Readers program over this last weekend, where they were learning how to better educate and raise young readers in our Commonwealth. So please join me in welcoming Amy Bartalatti and her mom, Carol Peterson.
So glad you both could join us today in Richmond. Congratulations on your Raising Readers. It sounds like a wonderful program. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an announcement.
Delegate Carr, you have the floor.
Along with co-chairs Delegate Miaris, Senator Mason, and Senator DeStef, I invite the body to attend tomorrow's Engaging Tourism Caucus. The caucus will meet tomorrow, Friday, January 24, at 7:30 in 200B in the Pocahontas Building. The subject will be sports and outdoor recreation, with presentations from the James River Association and the Virginia Tourism Corporation. I hope everybody can attend with us. We will have a second meeting on Wednesday, February 12, at the same time and location, and the topic for that day will be Virginia's growing film industry. I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Second morning hour order of business. The next order of business is the announcement of member requests to move legislation from any uncontested calendar to regular calendar. I have no such requests.
The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Third morning hour order of business. The next order of business is the announcement of requests for members for legislation to go by for the day and the subsequent motion by the majority leader. On page 4, Senate Joint Resolution 1 will go by for the day.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the legislation as announced by the clerk go by for the day.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that legislation as just announced by the clerk go by for the day. As many as favor the motion, shall say aye. Those opposed? The motion is agreed to. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Fourth morning hour order of business. The next order of business is recognition by members for points of personal privilege. The Speaker requests members to use their Request to Speak buttons to be recognized.
The clerk will call the calendar.
House calendar for January 23. House bills on third reading, uncontested calendar. House Bill 1061. House Bill 1258.
The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 99, nays 0, abstentions 0.
Ayes 99, nays 0, abstention 0. The bills pass.
House bills on third reading, regular calendar, page 2, House Bill 35, a bill to amend and reenact sections 19.2387 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to juvenile offenders' parole, reported from Public Safety with amendments.
The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 56, nays 44, abstentions 0. Ayes 56, nays 44, abstentions zero.
Ayes 56, nays 44, abstention zero. The bill passes.
House Bills on Second Reading Uncontested Calendar. Page 2, House Bill 516. A bill to amend and reenact Section 22.1253.13:4 of the Code of Virginia relating to high school graduation requirements, required courses or credentials, dual enrollment, reported from education with substitute.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The substitute is agreed to. Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 516 adds dual enrollment courses to the coursework that's eligible to fulfill the advanced coursework requirement for graduation. As a lot of you know, dual enrollment courses not only have the benefit of being advanced coursework that's typically taught by a college professor, but they're also portable to higher education. Dual enrollment can already be counted towards the advanced coursework for a school to meet its accreditation requirements, and this just makes sure that these things both reflect each other. In addition, Madam Speaker, the bill adds a high-quality workplace learning experience as an additional option for meeting high school graduation requirements. I do want to thank Delegate McNamara for working with me on this bill, and I would like to move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1246. A bill to authorize the issuance of bonds in the amount of up to $279,470,000 plus financing costs pursuant to Article 10, Section 9(c) of the Constitution of Virginia for paying costs of acquiring, constructing, and equipping revenue, producing capital projects at institutions of higher learning of the Commonwealth to authorize the Treasury Board, by and with the consent of the Governor, to fix the details of such bonds, to provide for the sale of such bonds, and to issue notes to borrow money in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, to provide for the pledge of the net revenues of such capital projects, and the full faith and credit and taxing power of the Commonwealth for the payment of such bonds, to provide that the interest income on such bonds and notes shall be exempt from all taxation by the Commonwealth and any political subdivision thereof, and to amend and reenact Section 2 of the first enactment of Chapters 285 and 358 of the Acts of Assembly of 2018, to change the project title for a project for the College of William &amp; Mary in Virginia with an emergency clause, reported from appropriations.
Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Torian.
Madam Speaker, I think that the clerk has done a fine job in presenting my bill, so I simply would ask that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Shall the amendment be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
Continue with the calendar. House Bill 1248. A bill to amend and reenact Section 2.21518 of the Code of Virginia relating to timing of required submission of capital outlay bill, reported from appropriations with amendment.
Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Torian.
Madam Speaker, this bill requires that the Governor, the Governor to submit in each legislative session a prefiled bill with amendments to the current six-year capital outlay plan enacted into law under current law. The Governor is required to submit amendments by December 20th. Madam Speaker, I would ask that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Shall the amendment be agreed to? Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? The amendment is agreed to. Shall the bills be engrossed and passed on to the third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The bills are engrossed and passed on to the third reading.
House Bills on Second Reading Regular Calendar. House Bill 33. A bill to amend and reenact Section 53.1165.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to parole, exception to limitation on the application of parole statutes, reported from public safety with substitute. And there are floor amendments.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, I move the substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, this bill is commonly referred to as the Fishback Bill. It deals with a case that came before the Supreme Court. In short, this bill would make individuals sentenced to juries between, sentenced by juries between 1995 and 2000 eligible for parole consideration. The parole was abolished in the state of Virginia in 1995. However, jurors were never instructed of this charge until the year 2000 following a court ruling. Accordingly, it is possible that jurors were imposing harsher sentences during this timeframe with the incorrect assumption that these individuals would only be serving a portion of the imposed sentence. This would create equity in the system and afford an opportunity for review. This bill, in addition, has been supported by the Virginia Association of Commonwealth Attorneys, and it provides for a situation for input by community stakeholders, including the Commonwealth Attorney for the jurisdiction where the case emanated from, under circumstances for review by the probation department.
The clerk shall report the amendment.
Move the floor amendment.
First floor amendment by Delegate Lindsey is available on iHOD LIS and in the copy room in the back.
Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, after listening to some of the members of this body as it relates to some of the concerns as to how we might, how this bill might impact the population that is presently in the prison system, I've agreed to file the floor amendment that would exclude from considerations individuals who have engaged in sexually violent behavior against minors. Minors are our most valuable commodity. They're the most vulnerable of those who inhabit this earth, and I believe that this is in keeping with the will and the spirit of what we're here to do business. So given that, I would move the amendment.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
Would the gentleman yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
The gentleman will yield.
I would ask the gentleman, is this, just so we have the wording the same, is this in the same language as was in the first floor amendment from yesterday regarding the sex offenses against minors? Does it cover the same offenses?
It would.
Okay.
All those in favor of the floor amendment, say aye. Those opposed? Floor amendment is agreed to.
Second floor amendment by Delegate Bell is available, is, the first floor amendment from Delegate Bell was identical to the amendment just adopted, so we will go on to the second amendment.
Do we withdraw it? How do, the amendment is the same, we certainly don't need to do it. Do we withdraw it or otherwise strike it, or how do we get past it?
I believe since it's identical, it's out of order, we need not.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Amendment by Delegate Bell is available, second amendment is available online on iHOD and the back copy room.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I move that the floor amendment be passed by.
Delegate Bell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Madam Speaker, I guess a parliamentary inquiry. If that is the motion made, would each side have two minutes to argue the point before the motion was heard?
Yes, Delegate Bell.
I don't object, that's fine.
Okay.
I can do it in two minutes. Thank you.
Delegate Bell, you have the floor.
All right. Madam Speaker, members of the House, so the bill that you have before you was described by Delegate Lindsey. Let me take some of my two minutes just to thank him for presenting the amendment himself. He was very gracious this morning when I spoke to him in his office about this, and I'm delighted that he took it and had the amendment. Thank you, Delegate Lindsey. There are, the measure that you are under, that you're considering would grant eligibility for parole to six nonviolent and 305 violent offenders. Of those 305 violent offenders, 37 were convicted by a jury of rape or sexual assault. Now, some of them would be covered by the amendment that was just made. DOC does not separate out child victims and adult victims, so all that's left are the adult victims, but it's some number of those 37 are the adult victims. And I want to be real clear what parole means. Parole is not some theoretical thing. What parole happens, when there is parole, is it means that the victim is going to get contacted, and that victim who had her rape case or sexual assault, her animate, just penetrate with an animate object, aggravated sexual battery, forcible sedomy, those are the cases that you're about to have go back to parole. She, and it's usually she, will get a call and say, hey, bad news, that case you put behind you 20 years ago is no longer behind you. We're inviting you to come back in to the parole board and tell five strangers, five strangers, what happened to you. And if you don't, as an aside, he might get out. Ladies and gentlemen, that's asking too much of these rape victims. I hope you will pass the amendment, which will take them also out of the ambit of the bill. Thank you.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the amendment.
Delegate Lindsey, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, as of November 30 of 2019, there were only 311 individuals, offenders, who were under this act, that would be impacted by this act. 290 of those individuals were over the age of 40 years old, and an additional 47 of those would be now eligible for geriatric release but yet have not been granted geriatric release. To say that, that an individual would be, or a person who has been found guilty would be eligible for parole, or, and that that's not theoretical, I would suggest is somewhat disingenuous. Parole is not automatic, and as evident by the parole board in how it's released persons, and in fact, you've got individuals who have now been in custody some now 40 years, would suggest that, that it's not a situation where it's automatic, it's not a situation where it's just granted willy-nilly, and that we've got people that we've designated to the job of reviewing these individuals and determining whether or not they're safe for reentry into the community. The fact that this bill is being brought is because consideration is not being looked at, as a, consideration is not being given to this class of individuals with a concern about whether jurors knew the sentence at the time of imposition or knew that there was no parole. And it appears that, that our parole board is working, because otherwise, these people would have been released some 10 or 15 years ago.
Those in favor of the motion to pass by the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Chairs in doubt, let's have a division, raise hands. Those in favor.
Okay, now the, now the.
We'll take a recorded vote. Those in favor of the motion to pass by the floor amendment, vote aye. The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 54, nays 45, abstentions zero.
Ayes 54, nays 45, abstention zero. The motion to pass by the floor amendment passes.
Next amendment by Delegate Bell is available online and on iHOD.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I move that the amendments be passed by.
Madam Speaker, I rise to speak to the motion.
Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
Okay, so I think we'll have a discussion about the bigger bill tomorrow and some of the issues that have been raised. Again, the simple fact that you have to go to the parole board itself is a big deal, but of course, the reason the advocates have brought this year after year presumably is because they want their family member, their friend, whoever it is they're advocating for to get out. That's why they're advocating for it. It's certainly what they have said in committee over the years, it's certainly what's on the signs when they have their rallies. And so, the idea that these people will not get out is, I mean, it's kind of the point of the bill. It's not to give them a hearing at which they will fail over and over, it's to give them a chance to get out. I don't speak for the patron's motives, he can certainly do that with great articulateness himself. Ladies and gentlemen, the second amendment that I'm asking you to consider is for the first-degree homicide. This is premeditated murder. Again, I've listened, I've heard. What they have said is, we want to see our son again, usually son, our child. For 112 families, there is no son again. Their son is dead and buried in the ground. It is too much to ask them to come back year after year after year to present the reasons why their killer of their son should stay in prison. I would ask that this group also be removed from the bill before final consideration tomorrow. Thank you.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, I would respond to the gentleman by simply saying that, to suggest that parole consideration is done year after year after year is disingenuous and just not factually accurate. There is statutory authority that speaks to, you know, that speaks to how parole is done and how often the considerations come up. You've got, you know, you've got a landscape, and I was kind enough to pass that to the other side yesterday when inquired of about this matter, and I would have assumed that it would have been passed on to Delegate Bell, but there's a landscape that talks about, you know, how much time you have to serve, you know, and I think the first, the first date is at least 12 years and/or one-fourth of your sentence. Then it transitions to at least one-third of your sentence. So, so it is not a year-after-year situation, and it's not an automatic circumstance where there's an expectation that, that the expectation is released. The expectation is to have these people who we have appointed, you know, have, who the Governor has appointed, and we've confirmed, look at a case-by-case situation, determine whether or not persons are safe for reentry into the community, and if they're not, to keep them locked up and to keep the rest of the community safe. And consistent with that, when you look at geriatric release, which is released after persons release, get beyond the age of 60, if in fact, they served at least 10 years of that prison incarceration, again and again and again, individuals are not being released on geriatric release, to the point where the budget is almost being busted for care for persons who are of a certain age group. This is not an opening up the door and letting the prisoners out. This is a process, one more process, that's available to the experts that we put in charge to make a determination as to what is appropriate as to persons for reentry or to be maintained as prisoners in our system. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Those in favor of the motion to pass by the amendment, shall say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There will be a recorded vote. Those in favor of the motion to pass by? Vote aye, those opposed, nay. The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 54, nays 45, abstentions zero.
Ayes 54, nays 45, abstention zero. Shall the bills be engrossed? Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, I move that the bill be engrossed and passed on to the third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading. There'll be a recorded vote. Those in favor of having the bill engrossed and passed on to its third reading will vote on the electronic voting board, aye, and those opposed, nay. The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 55, nays 45, abstentions zero.
Ayes 55, nays 45, abstention zero. The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Resolutions on Regular Calendar. Senate Joint Resolution 1 on page four has gone by for the day. Madam Speaker, that completes the calendar. Madam Speaker, that completes the calendar.
Per Rule 51 of the House, the House has now returned to the morning hour. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communications?
Meeting announcements for Thursday, January 23rd. Committee on General Laws will meet one-half hour after adjournment of the House in House Room Three. General Laws Housing Consumer Protection Subcommittee meets two hours after adjournment of the full committee, House Room Three. This is a change in time, two hours after adjournment of the full committee. General Laws Subcommittee on Professions, Occupations, and Administrative Process... Sorry, I lost my place. Professions, Occupations, and Administration Process Subcommittee immediately upon adjournment of full committee, House Room Three. This is a change in time, immediately upon adjournment of full committee. Labor and Commerce Committee, one-half hour after adjournment of the House, House Committee Room. Labor and Commerce Subcommittee Number Two, immediately upon adjournment of full committee, House Committee Room. Labor and Commerce Subcommittee Number Three, immediately upon adjournment of Subcommittee Number Two, House Committee Room. Privileges and Elections Campaign Finance Subcommittee, 4:00 PM, 200A Subcommittee Room. County Cities and Towns Charter Subcommittee, 5:00 PM, 200A Subcommittee Room. Health, Welfare, and Institutions, Health Professions Subcommittee, 5:15 PM, 400C Subcommittee Room. That's a change in location and time, 5:15 PM, 400C Subcommittee Room. Public Safety, Public Safety Subcommittee, 6:00 PM, 400B Subcommittee Room. Meetings Friday morning, January 24th. The Tourism Caucus meets at 7:30 AM, 200B Subcommittee Room. Finance Subcommittee Number Three meets at 7:30 AM, House Room One. Public Safety Committee meets at 8:00 AM, House Committee Room. County Cities and Towns Committee meets 9:00 AM, Shared Committee Room. Privileges and Elections Committee meets 9:30 AM, House Room Three. Democratic Caucus meets at 11:00 AM, House Room One. Republican Caucus meets at 11:00 AM, House Room Two.
Delegate from Caroline, Delegate O'Rourke.
Madam Speaker, procedural inquiry.
Delegate O'Rourke, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, having it been the past practice whereby the clerk would read amendments prior to the body's action on those, and given the number of individuals who may be watching session either online or from the gallery, is that something that possibly the clerk could do in sessions going forward?
We will definitely take them into consideration, and we'll share and read the shorter ones. Really, if we were to read the longer ones, we will probably be here for hours and hours. Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move when the House adjourns today, adjourn to reconvene tomorrow at 12:00 noon.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that when the House adjourns today, it adjourn to reconvene tomorrow, 12 o'clock noon. As many as favor, the motion shall say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that the House do now adjourn. As many as favor the motion will say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to, and the House stands adjourned until tomorrow, 12 o'clock noon.